What we're doing in the, in the policy itself. Payment of college obligations, making sure that things are verified and itemized before we make any payments. And service animals, which is tabled for next month. This one was kind of funny. It was, you can have service dogs and you can have miniature horses. And we had a question of making sure if, who cleans up after these animals if they're in a classroom and there's an, something happens.
Do you bring a bag?
Till next month, yeah.
What if somebody wants to bring their horse?
Well, there was a story recently that Spirit Airlines forced somebody to flush their companion goldfish. And they were, so I want to say that, I don't know that we would still call them service animals, because I want to say there's like a new term. Because they're there for like comfort and emotional support, not necessarily there to help you cross the street.
Yeah. And thank you for that story.
This is for helping.
I'm here to enlighten you.
This is, it says to accompany people with disabilities in all areas of the facility where the public is normally allowed to go. So another thing that got brought up is what if there's a, somebody who's allergic to dogs and there's a service dog in the, in the classroom. It's, we, we have to let the service dog stay and we have to make accommodations for the person who has allergies, because this is legally, we're legally.
This is, this is state law that we have to abide by.
State law that we have to abide by, yes.
Trustee Elaine?
A couple of other things on the, on the budget process. There is a point in here where the policy says that the president shall inform the board when there is an imbalance of expenditures over revenue. And we wanted to change that to reflect as soon as possible or immediately, so that that would not, not be known to the governance. And then also, there's, it mentions needing to maintain a 15 to 20 percent reserve and wanting overall unrestricted reserves at 20 to 25 percent. It's one thing to want something, but with those numbers in the policy, we'd immediately be violating our policy. What we all want and what's reality are different things, so we need to tone down the language on that. We can't require it and we can't say we need it. We've operated for 80 years without it, so.
Good point. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, can we move on? All right, next item, please.
No action items. Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who have submitted a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. I don't have any blue cards. I see one coming.
There it comes.
The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefits of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit the comments to three minutes. It's not in it?
Again, my, it was, I'm not really speaking to an action item.
We can do it after then?
We speak now?
Sure.
Okay, we have, Mr. John McDonald wants to speak to us regarding Dr. Baz's report.
Dr. Baz's report?
Dr. Baz's report, yes. And President's search. My eyes are getting tired here, John.
Type it out next time.
Tuition report? An unresolved HFC C.
Issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to be very, there's a number of issues there. I'm going to be brief. My voice is failing, which ought to restore your faith in the power of prayer. Many of you opposed to the administration. And I, I can't, I had to add, those students were just amazing. It made me very proud to be part of this college and very proud of the faculty. Very quickly, I, I agree with, and I, and trusty Elaine knows, I agree with the observation there are powers at work here that influence what we are, what we are able to do relative to funding and tuition. And we've got to find a way to address that. And that, I think, means political coalitions. You have the best of coalition partners in the American Federation of Teachers, in the, in the National Education Association, but there are other very important progressive organizations that, that I think the board should try to develop relationships with. You cannot, you're restricted in terms of political advocacy, but you're not restricted in terms of providing information. And in providing information, you lay, lay the blame to the feet of state legislators, and that's information, and you've, and you have that at your disposal, and the federal government. And we, we're going to have this conversation about tuition again and again and again and again, unless people become aware of who the bad actors are. And they're not you people, and they're not the employees. They are irresponsible legislators who give massive tax breaks to undeserving corporations with no promise in return from those undeserving corporations that they will really generate jobs in this, in this state. Secondly, I do understand the public relations issue that trustee Barry brought up, but I think it has to be addressed by laying the blame at the feet of the people who are responsible in a factual way. You have to do it factually, and you can do it factually. You don't have to become political per se. This is what state aid was, this is where state aid is now, this is what's threatening the Pell Grants, this is what we need in terms of Pell Grants. And just a more, a minor thing, when you put on a piece of, and this might have come up, I had to step out of the room for a minute. It looks like we're high on a chart. We're low on a chart. You know, we're not number three in something, we're number 26 or seven or something. So visually, I'd suggest changing that. And, and when you, and I hope you put forth the information that you referenced as to how inexpensive this institution is on the, on the expense side, how, how tight we are on the revenue side, that you do much the same thing. You know, where are the other colleges relative to their income and their, and their revenue obligations? And show us near the bottom, not the top. And, but it is a sensitive issue, and you've got to handle it carefully, because we have a millage election coming up. And some of the concerns that could be raised regarding tuition increases, which are the fault of others, could come back to bite us in terms of a millage election. And that kind of information is going to be needed in a millage election as well. On the faculty diversity issue, I communicated with Chair, at that time Chair Lane, in a letter. You know, the question came up as to how diverse the faculty were. I can only speak to full-time faculty. We do not teach the majority of courses here anymore. Adjunct faculty do. So I can't speak to adjunct faculty. But I know my members, and when we had 200 and some members, I went through the roster and I could identify 10% of the faculty of Arab-American descent, 10 of the, 10% roughly of African-American descent, 7% of Asia or sub-Asian descent, 51% female. Now, is that something you'd be proud of? Well, on the gender side of the equation, we're pretty much in line. We've got work to do. But it impresses me that in the area of the college where full-time faculty have most significant voice in the hiring of their colleagues, you have probably the very best representation you're going to find across the institution, and I can't speak to adjuncts at all, regarding diversity. But the other point I want to make is, you can't become diverse if you have no openings in which to hire people, unless you decide to indiscriminately kick people out of places of their employment. At one time, full-time faculty, 16, 15 members numbered 225 members, when we had the enrollment we have right now. And I've got the data. I'm, I'm a walking repository, or shuffling repository, of institutional history, as some poor souls heard the other day again and again in the search committee. But if you want diversity, there have to be openings. You're not going to find a mass of people walking away from their only source of income for the sake of diversity. At one point, we had slipped to 205. We're now well below that. We may get back to 200. We should get back to 200 by the, near the end of the contract. But I think you need to be thinking about whether 200 or 205 is going to meet your diversity Presidential, one other point, before I go to presidential search. There are some longstanding issues that we have been discussing with, with the administration, previous administration and now this administration, for some time. Some of them rather minor, that could have been handled with dispatch, and some of them more significant, but many of these go back to 2016. And if you know me, I, I always remind you, I've been around for, Union President for 40 years. In that time, two grievances have come to the board. In that time, one issue went to Merck. Now, I've got about three or four major grievances that are going to come to the board if we cannot resolve these issues. I do not like handling that kind of material in public. I think it's counterproductive. And I'm not faulting the administration, the current administration. I think we've made some progress, but I, I cannot tell 200 members, well, actually, it's about 180 members now, that this is going to go on much longer. So, you know, I'm just letting you know. And one of them involves safety matters, very serious matter, which I would rather handle privately. All right, presidential search. I'm sure this evening, or at some point, you are going to announce the finalists. I've been through five of these, and I have never seen everyone I think should be in the final five, in the final five. And I didn't see it this time. But you have a committee that was very large, which is presenting problems and challenges. And at that last meeting, the committee thanked, deservedly so, Becky Chadwick for handling a very, very difficult task. And at the risk of offending my members who are on the committee and all the others, it's like trying to herd cats when you have 30 people. It's easy for 30 people, get 40, 42 candidates down to eight, then the rubber hits the road. How do you get eight down to a more manageable number? Becky did an admirable job. And I have seen search firms in the past, I've had serious problems with search firms in the past. I thought AGB, you know, I came at that skeptically. They did a remarkable job. They were honest brokers. Dr. Hernandez, I tried to recruit Dr. Hernandez as a presidential candidate, and so.
I think he had a clause in the contract that you couldn't do that.
Yeah, keep McDonald away from me, yeah. I know that clause. But at any rate, both the firm and particularly Becky had a very difficult task. And I'm sure you, on your own, would have done this in the future, when, when this issue becomes on your agenda, but I want you to know how much the committee appreciated Becky and Dr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
So can we give a? I'd just like to stand up, Becky. I want to give you a standing ovation.
Okay. I'm into that.
We're getting close to 9:30, going to have to extend.
All right, but I also would like to add the name of Terry Hagan.
Yes.
Also worked very closely with Becky Chadwick, and without the two of them, it would have been a circus.
Yeah.
It turned out to be very well managed. So we at 9:30 have to extend, so let's get going on the action items. The one thing, we do need to have a roll call vote on 15 and 16.
Should we extend now? Let Sign do his, do his job here and we'll hold.
Next item.
I'm still a secretary.
Other than 15 and 16, are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude them from the action items below, from the action below.
Trustee Elaine?
I'd like to ask questions about number two and number five.
Two and five, okay.
We can vote for them, but you want to ask questions, or do you want to pull them?
Uh, no, I'd just like to ask questions and I would like to, although I have, I would like to make a comment on seven to 10.
I still am not clear.
She doesn't want to pull, Dr. Mead. She just wants a discussion. She wants a voice of opinion.
All right.
Okay, at this point, move to approve action items numbered 1 through 14 as recommended as an agenda.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes. Trustee Elaine?
Okay, so on number two, which is the recycling of the computers, I know they cascade down and all of that, I would just like to ask, and I don't need the answer right now, the computers are going to be purchased, I have no objection, but I would like to know whether, I know we recycle some of the parts, do we, how much do we try to recycle and how much do we landfill them? That's my question on number two. And I don't know if anybody has an answer to that.
Joe was here, but I believe he's gone.
Yeah, he was here, but, so that's, that's one question.
We'll get you answered then.
Okay. And then on number five, which is the Lucian Elevate.
Yes.
So I heard a lot about what it can do. I just would like, again, and I guess I'm just like repeating myself, do we actually use it for that? Does it recommend courses that we cancel? You know, do we have a running list of these? So is this instructing how we're handling, how we're managing our courses and our programs? And again, I don't have to have a, I have an answer right now, but I think the board would be well informed to know this. Do we have lists of classes that don't break even? We can, we can get these numbers, yeah, okay, the program can do it. And I'm, I'm certainly not criticizing you, Mr. Sitkowski.
No, not a problem.
Yeah.
No problem.
But are we doing it? I mean, are we getting rid of people that are Coopers or Carriage Makers or, you know, Milliners? Or are we still teaching these programs? You know, are we using our management tool as much as we can on number five? So that's my question on that. And then, again, with the tuition and with the personnel, I don't see, my, and this is just an editorial, where are we going long-term? How many, you know, how does it relate to our strategic plan? How many people are we hiring? It's, how does our tuition relate to our strategic plan? I could guess that it's going to make us financially solvent, but can we be a little more specific than that? So just my editorial. Thank you.
You're uncomfortable with that direction? Okay. We need to extend, so do we make a motion to extend for 15 minutes? Is that what it is?
Yes, it's 15.
Motion to extend the Board of Director, Board of Trustees meeting 15 minutes.
Is there?
So moved.
There's a move in a second? There's a motion, is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor indicate. Oh, need a roll call. Roll call, please.
Hussein Barry, yes. Fadhahamud?
Yes.
Mary Lane?
Yes.
Celia Nasser?
Yes.
Mary Petchikoff?
Yes.
James Thorpe?
Yes.
Chair Michael Mead?
Here. I mean, yes. I mean, I'm just barely here.
It's 15 minutes, it's going to go real long. Okay, so now we've got a vote on the 1 through 14. We, we have a motion and a support.
Wait, wait, wait.
There is a motion and there is support for items 1 through 14. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous.
We'll go right to 15 then. Calling for a closed session. Move to enter into closed session upon adjournment of the regular board meeting, regular board meeting on February 19, 2018, per Michigan Open Meetings Act 15.268, Section 8(c) for strategy and negotiation of a collective bargaining unit, and per Section 8e to discuss pending litigation. Entron versus Henry Ford College, McComb County Circuit Court, case number 17-004221-CB.
Is there a move?
Support.
Second?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Hussein Barry, yes. Fadhahamud?
Yes.
Mary Lane?
Yes.
Celia Nasser?
Yes.
Mary Petchikoff?
Yes.
James Thorpe?
Yes.
Chair Michael Mead?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
I'm going to sit here.
Going right to 16. 2018 MASB Board of Directors Elections. Superintendent Maliko, I don't think he's here, I don't know if we're going to need to, okay.
Mason's here.
Okay, so the recommended action, move that the Dearborn Board of Education cast its vote for blank as candidate for the MASB Board of Directors position for Region 8, Group 6, one seat for a three-year term.
I move that we support Darlene Pomponio, who is from Southgate Community Schools.
I support that.
Any, we have a motion?
I, I moved it.
You moved, you seconded, so is there any discussion?
Roll call.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please. Hussein Barry, yes. Fadhahamud?
Yes.
Mary Lane?
Chair.
Celia Nasser?
Yes.
Mary Petchikoff?
Yes.
James Thorpe?
Yes.
Chair Michael Mead?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, you can keep this. Next item?
Yeah, yeah.
Board of Trustees Business, acknowledgment of, acknowledgements of correspondence.
And we got something about the collage concert, but that was in there.
There was an email that came out just the other day regarding, oh, man, it was a petition from here in the college.
I didn't see that. No.
In your dreams, or?
No, I looked twice and it was there each time.
Okay.
It was from a student?
I couldn't tell if it was a student or a faculty.
I don't, I don't recall, but maybe I just didn't open it.
It came over the last couple of days.
I would recommend that you move, you forward to Dr. Mead and let him forward to all of us. That's probably best. Anything else?
Next item?
Okay. Board Committee Reports.
I'd like to talk about the search for the new president. And as you're all aware, there was an original committee of 33 people, a very nice mix of community, administrators, faculty, students. Who else did I miss? Staff that were very diligent about the process. And so they started with 42 applicants, they windled it down to eight, and over the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, everybody was there except two. So 30 people approximately reviewed, listened to the candidates, and then on Sunday night, went into small groups where they discussed these candidates and had a very elaborate system to make sure that we got the top candidates, and they were listed on a board, and people agreed to these candidates. And so at this point, the board will receive the names of five candidates, who the board then will also interview and make a decision about who will be the next president. Now, the names of the people who the committee has recommended in alphabetical order is Russell Cavalluna, Michael Nealan, Tom Watkins, Christopher Reber, and Cassandra Olbridge. So I take my hat off to the committee, it was, it was cumbersome to have 30, actually start with 33, I think. It was cumbersome, but they were very, very cooperative, worked very diligently, showed up the whole day, Saturday and Sunday, without any complaints, and as, and just did a really, really good job. We feel like authentically, we have five candidates that either one of them could do the job. So now it's up to the board to make a decision, and we look forward to that. That'll be at the end of March and the first week in April, and I have a question to the board. There are five candidates, so we can do two on a Monday night and two more on a Monday night, but we need to do the fifth on the next night. So what I'm talking about is the date of April 3. We would be meeting on the dates of March 26, that's a Monday, and then April 2nd, that's a Monday, and then Tuesday, we would meet at 5 o'clock to interview the fifth candidate, and then we would deliberate in public? In public. We would deliberate in public and make a determination at that night of the 3rd of April. So I'm hoping that all board members would be available. You are not. So all we have is the, the two Mondays. Are you out of town, Mr.?
I am out of town. I can do a conference call if that is.
No, you can't. Can't do that. You can't do that, right?
We've done it in the past.
Yeah, we did, but it ended up.
Not, okay.
Well, really, the reception was horrible and everything. Let's try to be all here. What would be, when, are you available any other time during that week?
I'm gone that week.
That whole week?
Spring break.
Oh, you wouldn't even be there for the two, for the Aprils?
I won't be here on the 2nd or the 3rd.
Oh, oh, oh.
I leave right when school's done, that previous Thursday.
Okay. So we need to move then to the week after, it'd be the week of April 9.
Well, the 9th, we would have.
But we have a board meeting.
Well, and we're going to be at a conference, a few of us are going to be at the conference for, at San Antonio.
That's true.
Four of us, four of us, so we're, that, that 9th is not even, we, we moved to make that a Tuesday.
Change the board reading, yeah.
The 10th is the P-12 meeting.
And we got the college on the 16th.
Can we just do them the week of the 26th?
Yeah, Dr. Mead, if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
You want to go to the week of the 26th?
Of March?
Yeah.
And just do all five that week?
Yeah, so maybe the 26th, which we, we have already, maybe the 27th and 28th.
What, what about that? That's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, 26th, 27th, and 28th. Does that fit people's schedules?
So those are specifically just for the interviews?
They would be interviews, we'd have two on Monday, two on Tuesday, one on Wednesday, so that we have sufficient time to deliberate on Wednesday, which would be the 25th.
How long would each interview be?
An hour and a half.
Okay.
An hour and a half for each interview.
Is there a reason we're doing these during the week versus the weekend, knowing that we've got some coming in from out of town?
No, there's no reason why we couldn't do them on the weekend.
I think we have one, one, one out of state.
One out of state, yeah, okay.
Well, what would your, what's your pleasure, trustee Thorpe? Are you thinking it would be better for you on the weekends?
I don't know, I'm trying to get there.
Oh, okay.
I think it makes more sense for us to have them the three days in a row, just because it's still fresh in our head, what we, you know? We just met with them, instead of having one or two of them and then another week later.
Okay, I like that, too. So do we have any agreement that we could do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
I think it makes more sense for us to have them the three days in a row, just because it's still fresh in our head, what we, you know?
Okay.
We just met with them, instead of having one, or two of them, and then another week later.
Okay, I like that, too. So do we have any agreement that we could do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth?
And we would be starting at five, five o'clock?
In March, starting at five?
All three nights.
Huh?
All three nights would be starting at-
Yes. They give us enough time on Wednesday to deliberate, but also get enough time, we're talking about three hours of interview time on Monday and Tuesday, and one and a half hour on Wednesday, and then have time afterwards to deliberate.
With like fifteen minutes between?
Fifteen minutes in between, correct? Fifteen minutes in between. Is that acceptable to all?
I'm good with that, Dr. Mead. I don't know how my-
Any objection? Then it's, yes?
I, I do have a question, though. When would we invite them onto campus for the rest of the community to get to have a conversation and meet with them?
I have it scheduled now, the week of the twelfth and the week of the nineteenth. I was trying to do it as early as next week, but they just can't do it. And then the next week's spring break, so the week of the twelfth and the week of the nineteenth, so you would have all of the feedback from the-
Right, because I want, I wanted to acknowledge the fact that we have one of our student committee members here, who had shared with me her concerns that she felt with only two students on the committee, that, that their voices were muted. And so I wanted to let her know that there is another opportunity for the students' feedback to come to us again, when these candidates come onto campus, and the students can have another interview process with them again, and then give us feedback that we will incorporate into our decision-making, so that you can feel that you have another opportunity to have your voice heard, if you have any other issues or concerns you'd like to express.
Actually, two, they would have two options. One is specifically just for students and student groups, and then there's an open session that they could attend as, as well.
Great, so, so-
Two different opportunities.
I hope, I hope you can communicate that, and we will have that communicated throughout the campus, so that everybody knows that the students who, who want to have input are, are gonna be given that opportunity.
So the weeks of the-
So, yeah, so those-
So the weeks of March twelfth and March nineteenth, five candidates will be split among those two weeks to meet with all of the committee, with all the groups-
With anybody.
College groups, community groups, student groups, and then we would have that feedback for the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth, when we're making, I think this is working well.
Yeah, that sounds-
Any objections?
No.
Good, next item.
Quick comment, though. We did have two students in our committee, and they weren't just there, just so the students represented, I was very, very impressed. They were very, very vocal with their opinions, and they showed them, they represented very well. They're two very intelligent students, so thank you for your service.